Good evening. It is 6:01 on Thursday, May 11th. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education's order and ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Dr. Boddy? Dr. Kavanaugh?
Present.
Ms. Lilj? Present. Mr. Lopez? Ms. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Dr. Rodriguez? Ms. Williams? Ms. Willis?
Present.
Or is present?
Thank you. That brings us to public comment on agenda items. Oh, additions to the agenda first, sorry. Mr. Lopez?
Yes, I've with all due respect, I asked that we hold a moment of silence for Dr. Clyde Carnegie?
I did hear about his passing. Sure, let's do that, Mr. Lopez. Thank you. I know that Dr. Carnegie is leaving a big set of footprints to fill and has a lasting legacy that has been very good for the city of Lansing and beyond. Next would be public comment on... Did any other board members want to make a comment? I'm sorry.
I do have a...
Mr. Lopez?
You know, Dr. Carnegie was at our ceremony on Tuesday. And he did announce that he was stepping down as pastor or acting for pastor. He was stepping down. Previous to that, he and I had a conversation where he was feeling sad about it but happy that he was going to be able to step back and just be of service should they need him. So, it was sad news when I got it this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment on agenda items, for which we have none. That brings us to our special presentation, which this evening will be a performance by the Everett High School Cheer Team. We're ready for you ladies and gentlemen.
Hi, everyone. Hi, board. Hi, everyone in the audience. How you doing? Good? Are we good?
Yeah.
Cool. I just wanted to introduce my cheerleaders really quick. As you can see, they have an assortment of uniforms. This is just decades of uniforms from each generation of cheer that we've had. And we also have alumni here with us as well that are cheering alongside our current cheerleaders. If you're an alumni, raise your hand. So, we have a lot of veterans. A lot of our veterans have been to college, have gotten scholarships, a lot of them have won awards with cheer, which is amazing. So, it's great that you guys let us have this opportunity to showcase some of the things that we do at the school. Okay.
Let's go out. E-T-S. Let's go. B-U-L. E-T-S. Let's go. B-U-L.
Coach B and Coach G, thank you so much. I'm going to figure out a way to have them be my hype team everywhere I go. Just follow me around and cheer. That was wonderful. Thank you so, thank you so much. Bye, thank you. I am going to postpone item number six on our agenda for just a moment and move us on to, move us on to our presentation for Mr. Hartley.
No backflips for me. And that was, I believe, an alumni. So, he's getting up there and agent still doing that. That was amazing. I see getting up in age, he's probably 19. So, first of all, welcome to the Lansing Learning Hub. Really appreciate Superintendent Shulner giving us an opportunity to showcase what we've done this year and also talk about celebrations and moving into next year. I am not going to do this presentation alone because I have invited the real team that rolls up their sleeves every day and makes this possible. So, I'd like to introduce them. And if they don't mind coming up here, Abigail Johnson, who is our social worker from Catholic Child, or I'm sorry, Child Family Charities, and she will speak in a second as well. Doris Schumake, Community Engagement Coordinator, among other things. Jeremy Clayborne, same. Nick Gatlin, who's an urban fellow, who's been an integral part of starting the hub. He is out of town. And this was kind of, as you know, we changed what the presentation was going to be, and he already had plans. And so, he says, "Thank you for being here," and he wishes he could join us. And then, I also want to introduce Amber Lee, the Principal of Capitol Area Online, because part of the presentation, you'll see that we share staff, we share space, and Capitol Area Online teachers are an integral part of the Learning Hub as well. And then, I'm going to wait to introduce the last team member because he's going to kind of end the presentation. So, we'll be with you in a second. Okay, so, this is a saying that is near and dear to my heart, and I know it's shared with the team, and that's be a gateway, not a gatekeeper. Our students come to us, and I say tend to be because not every student fits this kind of profile, but many of them come to us deficient in credit. I think I spoke about the hub earlier in the year. We talked about giving the principals at the high schools kind of this criteria of student that they would meet with, meet with the family, and recommend or refer over to the hub. And 100% of those students were deficient in credit in some manner. I will tell you that many of the students were a year, even two years behind when it came to credits. Many of our students tend to be in the system. And what I mean by that is just kind of stuck in that status quo, taking Algebra I in a traditional setting, not passing. Second semester, what do we do? We put them in that same class, same teacher, and what's the definition of insanity? Doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. So, that's what I mean by, a lot of our students, when we sit with them and in the onboarding meeting and we talk to them, a lot of them have kind of been through kind of the same experiences when it comes to a traditional learning environment. And so, here at the hub, we want to be opposite. We say, "We don't want you to feel like this is school. This is a safe learning place for you to learn the best way that you do," kind of out of the system. Some of them have worn out their welcome. Maybe they weren't attending class. Maybe they were walking the halls eight hours a day or showing up at 10:00 a.m. and leaving at 10:01 a.m. or something of that nature. So, and then, we have students that are really, you know, tend to be battling life and overcoming barriers that a typical student may not be experiencing. We have four young mothers part of our program. One is graduating, actually. And so, you know, life gets in the way for all of us. In some circumstances, it doesn't necessarily get in the way of us going to our job or us going to a traditional learning environment or what have you, and sometimes it does get in the way. And the hub is here to serve those students. Our team that I just introduced, we have a growth mindset. So, growth mindset is knowing that you're never still. You're never complete. It's you, we are a constant work in progress, no matter what our age, no matter what our circumstance. And the hub really reflects that. So, even in the way we work together as a team, even the young man that is going to come up and speak here in a few minutes, you know, to say that we're fixed, to say that we're here now and we will never move from where we're at, that's a fixed mindset. We have a growth mindset, constantly moving, constantly progressing. And if we run into barriers and what we've tried, the solutions haven't worked, guess what? There's other solutions that we'll try. We take time to personalize our students' learning experiences. I think that's key. So, yes, that's academics, but also that's life. Ms. Schu is going to talk about a guest speaker that we've had here the last couple of days. And the reason why we brought her in is because we saw a need within our female students and some trauma that some of our students have experienced. And we brought Dr. Berry in to specifically work with those students and then train us as a team. And I'll let Ms. Schu talk about that here in a few minutes. And then, understanding the meaning of second chances, I think that's very important. So, we want to be that bridge, not that barrier. You can't, and I don't know if you have this in front of you, I don't think you do, and we may need a new projector. It is budget season, just throwing that out there. So, our mission, our vision, and our beliefs, and I'm not going to read through there, this is on our website, but you see some bolded phrases, "Unique educational experiences," "Individual needs," "Trusting relationships," "Empowering student voice." That's huge. Many of our students have never really felt like they own their learning or that they're writing their own story. And we tell them, you know, "Don't let anybody else write your story." And so, that's important, valuing their individuality. Growth mindset, empathetic. And then, our beliefs, and you can't really read it, but there's one statement that I like, and it's, "We've never done that, should not be a statement, it should be a question." So, it's not, "We've never done that." It's, "We've never done that, and then, let's find a way to get it done." And that's important. So, the hub team, as I pointed out, Jeremy Clayborne, Nate Gatlin, who cannot be with us tonight, Abigail Johnson, Dorcas Schumake, myself, and then Amber Lee is an integral part of our team as well. There we go. What you see here, and I know you'll get a digital copy of this presentation, I'm sure along with a hard copy as well, but what this is, is just screenshots of Edgenuity. So, Edgenuity is the online courses that we use through Imagine Learning. And Capitol Area teachers are on the back end, and they're the teacher of record. And we'll talk a little bit about more detail here in a few slides as far as how important they are. But what you see is a progress report, so the colors, the red, the yellow, the green for a student. And then, what you can't see is a session log report. So, this is key for us to target intervention, meaning we can see exactly when a student's logging in, how much time they're working on a course, how much idle time that there is, and then what activities, meaning lessons, quizzes, tests, and so on. And then, the progress report shows their current grade in the class, and then, are they on track to complete that course in the time that we set that for? So, I do want to make sure that what's communicated is our students aren't necessarily, they have these five classes expected to finish Semester I, Semester II. So, many of our students are in credit recovery courses, may finish a course faster, in a more timely fashion than what a semester would be. So, I finished Algebra I, maybe, let's say, in five weeks. That next day or even that same day, I'm now scheduled for Algebra B. And then, the session report is key. So, pretty, I just met with a parent the other day, and there was some discrepancy on what the child was telling the parent he was doing and what the data's showing. And so, I was able to print these out, sit down, and we had a real good conversation with when exactly is that student logging in, doing work, and how much progress that student's making. So, that hybrid approach of anytime, anywhere, this may or may not surprise you, but many of our students are on at 1:00 in the morning for various reasons. If you log into the session report, you'll see that when they're here at the hub, they're online, so 9:00 to 11:00 or maybe noon to 2:00. We have some students that stay here all day. But the key to all of this is that they're working on the weekends, they're working in the evenings. And those students that take that opportunity to work beyond those hub hours are catching up. And I have a slide to show how we've made some progress. So, part of the hub is PLP, Personal Learning Plans. Those are just some questions that we use to kind of guide those conversations. The team, especially Mr. Clayborne and Ms. Schu, talk to the students, text the students when the students are here face to face. Are they on track? Are they off track? What's the plan to get them on track? Look, you're six credits away from graduation. Here's the plan. This is how we have to do it. So, those conversations and being very intentional. As you know, Superintendent Shulner bringing the portal, new visions, we just had a meeting today, critical. Ms. Schu, Mr. Clayborne, Mr. Gatlin in the portal and making those notes each week when they meet with the student. I'm going to now hand the microphone off to Mr. Clayborne, and he's going to talk about something that really is special to the hub, and that's community partnerships.
Hello, everyone. So, here at the hub, we like to bring folks in who have a story to tell. Just about everyone across the board, no pun intended there, has a story to tell, a story of adversity that they've overcome. So, for example, we brought in someone who is with the Kellogg Corporation out of Kalamazoo or Battle Creek, and he spoke to our students. It was awesome. We had Mayor Andy Short coming in to speak with our students. We took a field trip to Capitol Area Steel. They are hiring Zach. He's getting ready to graduate, which is awesome. We had some members of the Lansing Executive Team come and speak, and they participated in what's called a lunch and learn. So, again, a lunch and learn is when we bring a community partner in, a person in a leadership position or role, and they provide lunch for our students out of the norm. We've had a lot of shawarma this year. Boy, we had Chick-fil-A come in, owner-operator Kate McNerney, that was awesome. She brought in some sandwiches. Man, we had a packed house for that one. Ms. America came in with Capitol Area Michigan Works, and she's, she's ready. She's on standby to mentor some of our students, which is awesome. We actually had a gentleman with Off the Streets Leadership and Empowerment Program come in today and speak with our students, our young men. It was an awesome experience for those young men. So, we have a lot of students that are learning to overcome adversity at their young age, which is a lot easier, I think, said than done, but I can speak from experience, it is possible. We had Mr. David Aldrich come in with CTE to explain the application process as well as the programs that are being held at the newly remodeled Hill Center. And I came to like that he's also in charge of the work-study-based programs here in the Lansing School District, which is awesome. We have a lot of students who are working, so to know that they can receive credit while working is exceptional, right? Just to fast-track them to graduation, being behind. We have Abigail here, Mrs. Johnson. She's a social worker with Child and Family Charities. It's incredible. Our students can drop in with her in her office around the corner, chop it up with her, speak to her about anything and everything. It's incredible. Families can come in and speak with her. It's awesome. Mr. Marcus Leslie came in and spoke to the kids. He owns Mr. Leslie's Cheesecakes. We took a field trip to Potter Park Zoo. You'd be amazed at how many kids have not experienced things outside of their home or school. So, it's probably, you know, a couple of our students, their first time being at Potter Park Zoo, and I know it for a fact, actually. So, it was really cool. So, we want, you know, Mr. Hartley, Dr. Hartley's goal in implementing the hub, one of those things was to give these kids, our students, experiences that they would not have had without the hub. And to show them a better life, right? Possibilities. So, we're looking at visiting the LCC West Campus in partnership with communities and services, possibly next month. And also, we took our young men to LCC West Campus for the Men of Color and Trades Event. We ate good. They had an opportunity to go hands-on with exhibits there at the LCC West Campus. It was really cool. So, they get to see possibilities after graduating high school with LCC and beyond. We had a Thanksgiving dinner that was set up by Sodexo. That was good eating. We didn't have dressing, but we'd have stuffing, if you understand my drift, but that's okay, right? That's okay. It was good. It was good. We took a field trip to Broad Art Museum, and we have many more to come, running into next school here.
Thank you, sir. And, you know, the community partnerships next year, when we report, will be triple that list. It's just they, and what's cool is, you know, at first, we're reaching out and we're trying to build relationships, and then, as the word got out, we have people contacting us now. And so, that list just continues to grow. Like Broad Art Museum, we have a student that is very artistic, and she, that is a, you know, an experience that she will always remember and kind of motivated her. And then, the, we have students that are looking for jobs. So, the Capitol Area Steel, being able to connect them. So, thank you, Jeremy. And then, Child Family Charities, we contract with them. And what's nice is with this, as Jeremy pointed out, this isn't necessarily, you know, someone that is confined to the school setting or just our students. Abigail can meet with siblings, with families, and essentially, we have a clinic here at the hub. So, I'm going to let her just speak briefly about some of the highlights of what she's brought to us.
Thank you. I'm very, very excited to work with Lansing School District and Child and Family Charities. It's been such a wonderful partnership. Both are very, very understanding of like the needs of students. And a lot of this work, you know, we started with Wellness Mondays, which is I come down and I try to give a presentation to the kids, whether it's about, you know, kind of trauma one-on-one, or this is how, you know, you should be communicated with and for, and this is how we identify our triggers. This is how we calm ourselves down when we are triggered. So, Wellness Mondays was kind of that start, but then, we just, we've discovered kind of smaller groups work better with students, whether it's due to the space, whether it's due to their relationships with each other, or really, it's just hard to share. And especially by the time students get here, sometimes they've tried to share and either been shut down or something has happened. So, that individual student support comes in a lot. I started seeing way more students once I started getting snacks down at my room. So, whether students need to eat, they need just a second to deal with life before they sit down and do their work. We've done that with our wonderful speakers. I've been able to take students aside because sometimes that hits really, really close to home. And so, sometimes I need to take students aside and just go, "Let's just take a breath." So, we can take in everything that's happening, so you can learn from your schoolwork, so you can, you know, take in what this presenter is giving you. We just need a breath. And it's just so great to be able to do that here. We're hoping to grow for 2023, 2024. I don't know if I'm leaking anything. I know Adam's told me another hub hopefully in Flint, and I will be able to hopefully see students through telehealth there. I can see students telehealth now if they can't come in or if it's like a Monday or Friday, we don't always have students here, but I'm available then for them too and their families. And we're just really working on getting more students in because it is a lot about building relationships before we can really sit down and do that work, whether it's schoolwork or counseling therapy work.
Very good. Thank you. And the great thing too is that she's available for Capitol Area families as well. So, that's as we grow into 23, 24, we will be making sure that those families take advantage of that. As I stated, with that targeted intervention, academics absolutely, but as you heard from so far, Mr. Clayborne, Ms. Johnson, really that those basic needs, the emotional needs, and we know, you know, when students feel loved for, cared for, feel safe, they're going to learn better. And if we don't take care of those kind of targeted interventions, then there's no point in asking a student to complete Algebra I or English X or whatever it may be. And so, the, Ms. Schu took the lead on Dr. Berry, Tiara Berry. She's from Atlanta. She is the CEO and founder of A Woman Standard. And I'm going to let Ms. Schu speak about the two days that she spent here and what she, you know, brought to the table. And we're looking to forward to actually bringing Dr. Berry back next year. She really connected with our students and staff.
Good evening. I want to say that we are killing it for our rookie year. Really, we are. And I think that what we do is not something that is not done in other high schools, but we do focus on these unique learning experiences, these unique educational experiences. And one of them that we experienced this week was from Dr. Tiara Berry, like Dr. Hartley said, and she is the CEO and founder of A Woman Standard. And I believe you all met at an alternative conference a while back? And so, when she came, she, what I loved about it most is that she asked questions about who our students are and what they're up against in life. And I said, "Well, if you can imagine, many of them are, you know, if not impoverished, but very close to poverty. They come from a, a place where they have made some really, you know, bad choices, if you will, and they are in a place now in the hub where they have a chance for redemption." Does that make sense? And so, from there, she just took off. She really spoke to the needs of our young women. A lot of our young ladies have been in situations where they have been taken advantage of, where they have, whether it's been, you know, from a family friend, at the YMCA, whatever. And so, she spoke to the needs of these young women and empowered them in a way in that by the time she left, they were able to express audibly and very confidently that they had worth, and they were able to share what their worth was, which is amazing because the first day, you know, we're going around a room and we're asking, "Hey, you know, what's your name? What do you love to do? And what's something good about you?" And they were like, "Ah, I don't know. I mean, I go to the hub. I like to jump rope." And they didn't have anything good to say about themselves. By the time she left, they were able to say, "You know, my name is so-and-so. I love to jump rope, and I am a really good listener. I'm a really good friend." And that's an amazing quality, right? And then, as a staff, we were able to sit with her on the second day and just talk about what we do so beautifully already. We love our students. There's no secret to it. We do. We tell them that we love them, you know, we encourage them, and I think that comes from a well of empathy because, you know, not many of us have come from a silver spoon. We've come from this community or communities like this, and showing them that love and that care has been amazing because we see results. Some kids didn't go to school at all, right? But they'll come here, you know? Maybe it's the food. I'm not 100% sure. But I do know that they come and they're diligent in their work and that they, we see a side of them that maybe their parents, old folks, have never seen before. And so, Dr. Berry just really, you know, drove home what this social, emotional learning looks like at the hub and what it looks like for us and our students. And so, I really think that we are equipped to go, you know, a few more rounds and just see what, just how amazing this school, this team, this opportunity can be. this school, this team, this opportunity can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hsu. With that, and again, it's hard to see, but when you do get the link and able to review, the far left, it's a quadrant that Dr. Berry really pointed to that resonated. I know with all of us, we spend a lot of time talking about that. But the top left box says, let me tell you what it says. Hold on. My glasses aren't working that well. Okay. So it says punitive, right? And then with the highlighted says restorative. And we talked a lot about how many of our students, 16, 17 years of more of this punitive learning environment. Make a mistake, pay a consequence. Make a mistake, pay a consequence. And each time kind of taking a step back. Don't get a credit, miss a credit, miss a class. And pretty soon, I mean, and we've all been teenagers, there's a certain time where you're like, ah, forget it. And the pandemic certainly didn't help with that. And so we spent a lot of time looking at how do we move, you know, kind of up that scale from building positive relationships and then being able to be restorative. So these students are living up to that expectation that we have for all of our students. They know what it's gonna take to walk that stage with a high school diploma, but they also don't feel like if they make a mistake at the hub, they're never coming back. And that's not easy to do. It's May, and the work that our team has done with certain students, it is easy to say, get out of here. You're not right for this program. It's not easy to say, come back tomorrow and let's try this again. And so the sweat and blood and tears that they've endured over the school year has just been amazing. So I just wanted to point that out. So exciting going into next year. And so as Ms. Hsu kind of pointed out, our rookie year. And I will tell you, the vision that I had when I first sat down with Ben and the executive team has totally changed over the course of the year, because we're in the trenches now, where this works, this doesn't work. Hey, what about this? And so just constantly progressing and growing and changing and adapting. And really excited to move into more of this customization of courses. And we're partnering with the Michigan Department of Education on looking at how are other very successful alternative credit recovery programs doing it across the state? And then what, kind of landing on what is the expectation of here in the Lansing School District? But also looking at those Michigan merit, the Michigan merit curriculum and those standards, and how can we customize our courses? So our students are, for instance, taking Spanish I, and they're learning what needs to be learned, the content, and they're showing competency in the standards that the state says they must complete to get a credit, but they're not spending three more months on content or repetitive content, because there's no need for that, and it's not purposeful. So we're really excited to dig deep, roll up our sleeves and customize the edgenuity courses even more so and be very intentional about that. So when we start the school year next year, our students who are coming to us a year behind, two years behind, whatever it may be, what we're finding is many of those E's on their transcripts don't reflect their intellectual capacity. I know that doesn't surprise any of you. So with that, then why are we saying, come on into the hub, you're gonna take English IX for the 10th time? That was an exaggeration. I apologize. We are gonna put you on English X. They show competency in English X, thus they have competency for English IX. And the, when Ben and I and I think it was Christina and Sergio for the first meeting with MDE, and we kind of talked about what really that Michigan merit curriculum was meant to push school districts towards, we're like, okay, this is gonna be awesome. So actually, Rochelle from MDE is at Sexton tomorrow, presenting to counselors and some staff, so the hub team will be over there as well. And then she's actually coming down, sitting down with us in June. What I'd like to do, just as an example, we've already started this process, and Lori Anthony, who is a Capital Area English teacher, is gonna join us live, remote. And as I pointed out, Capital Area is an integral part of the hub due to shared space, due to shared staff, and the ability to really problem solve together. And Lori and I go way back in the Schwartz Creek days, and she actually has started out in the alternative ed world as a teacher, and then went to Schwartz Creek High School, and then we were able to steal Lori. And she's one of the reasons why I can't show my face in Schwartz Creek anymore. But we're very fortunate to have Lori. She's an expert in curriculum. And we're just reminiscing about, jeez, a decade ago, her and I, as I was the assistant superintendent for curriculum in Schwartz Creek, worked together to identify power standards, moving towards a standard-based grading system. And here we are in Lansing, essentially working together to do the same thing for our alternative ed students. So it's really powerful. So I asked her to join us, so you can kind of get a feel for what Capital Area is all about. It's remote. We have a live teacher. Amber did an amazing job this second semester, working with us to get creative, to free up Capital Area teachers to be live for our students, if they need tutoring or if they need, you know, extra help. So we look to roll into next fall with that opportunity for our students as well. Just a little prelude on Lori being the kind of the trailblazer with this. We have a student that just, English is in this student's way of graduating. And that conversation with the student, basically, she's like, yeah, I really don't like English. Never really had, you know, in my opinion, good English teachers. It's boring. I drew during class, you know, and so on. So again, it's not the, her ability to pass those classes. It's all about the motivation and so on. So we talked about, well, let's do this. Let's work with MDE. Let's look at the power standards and let's customize those English classes. And Lori did that, and she's just gonna talk a little bit about what we're gonna, the work we're gonna do this summer and, you know, partnering with MDE and really making those courses intentional, purposeful, and meaningful for our students. Go ahead, Lori.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so first off, thank you, Dr. Hartley. It is so exciting to be working with you again and the entire team at Capital Area and the Lansing Learning Hub. So thank you. Also, thank you, Board, for having me. You guys are actually joining me in my virtual classroom, which I think is very cool. As Dr. Hartley said, I left a district that I absolutely loved, but because of a growth mindset and wanting to help students within a different community, that is why I chose to start working in Lansing and for Capital Area. And boy, it is, it's just been an amazing experience. And being on the front lines with Dr. Hartley and the entire team, trying to service our students, it's exactly why I got into this profession. So he asked me to present, and I sat down and thought of all of the things that I wanted to share about what we're thinking about this curriculum. And he said, Lori, you have about a minute, a minute and a half. So I'm gonna just give you a really brief description of what we're thinking, and then if you have any questions, I'm open for questions. So like many presenters said tonight, our student body, you know, they're unique and they haven't felt a whole lot of success. So we want to do whatever we can to help them be successful. And so Dr. Hartley and I started talking, and I said, we really need to streamline our curriculum and just pick out the best areas for them to be college and career ready. We want them to be successful adults, but do they have to repeat all of the things that they have felt failure at? So I said, let's focus in on a student-centered focus that is college and career ready. We're gonna use edgenuity as kind of our goal, but let's pick out 10 to 12 power standards and connect the curriculum to those standards. And still connect to the writing, the reading, the speaking and listening, all of the common core state standards, but let's pick out those things that are gonna help our students be more successful. Also, let's have a writing focus with each grade level and kind of just streamline it for them. Just, you know, kind of to help them, again, feel successful, but also getting all of those still skills that are necessary for them to be productive adults within the community. And so I've also put together, I got down today and I put down 10 power standards that I'm going to start with. And now the hard work begins, because now I need to look at our online curriculum and see where those power standards fit. And so that's kind of the thought process. It is a work in process, work in progress. But I love that we're thinking that not all students, it's not one size fits all. So thank you.
Thank you. So just as an example, just like a hardcover textbook, could be this thick, teacher goes through lesson planning, you're not gonna cover everything in that textbook for the whole year. So going deep, not wide. So for instance, as she reviewed 11, English 11A and B, she found that there's five poetry units. Our students do not have to muddle through five poetry units. So they're going to have a robust poetry unit that brings in the different standards that they are, need to show competency in, but they don't have to go through five. So it's kind of that concept of matching it with the state standards, what edgenuity has to bring to the table, and making it more purposeful and meaningful. I'm gonna have Lori sign off, but before I do, any questions specifically for Lori? Before we let her probably go back outside, because the sun's still out. All right. Thanks for your time, Lori. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
So I have a quick slide. Okay, thank you. So as of today, we have 89 students enrolled at the Lansing Learning Hub. At the beginning of the year, Ben and I talking, you know, 30 by the end of first semester, let's let, you know, the high schools pick 10 students that are really deficient in credit, maybe need another learning environment. Then, you know, maybe by the end of the year, 50 or 60. And it's just, for many, many reasons and different factors, we knew that we are not gonna stop at 30. We're not gonna stop at 60. So we have 89 students enrolled. And just to let you know, you'll never see 89 students in this area at once. I mean, you may. We may have an event or what have you. We, out of those 89, I would venture, I looked over the roster today and in the portal, and about 65 are what we call engaged. And some students, we ghost us, is what we call it. And they're here every day. They're texting us. They're logging in. And then we just don't hear from them for weeks. We have students that have been gone for months, and then just recently, Mr. Claiborne texted the team, hey, so-and-so's in the house. And we're like, yeah, all right. Awesome. I thought maybe he had moved out of the Lansing area. And there's a lot of reasons why some of our students, it's not consistent. And again, it goes back to that slide where there's, you know, life gets in the way. And there's a reason why some of our students just simply aren't successful at the traditional setting, because if you miss a week, two weeks, three weeks, and you have to be on track, here, it's asynchronous, anytime, anywhere. They're gone for a month, they're gone for two months. It's, hey, welcome back. Let's get you back on. Where did you leave off? And let's go. So 89 students officially enrolled. We expect that enrollment to go up this fall. In September, our 2023 cohort, those students that were going into their fourth year, we had zero students on track. As of today, we have nine on track. We will, there's a couple, so that doesn't mean nine is necessarily walking across the stage. Most of them will. A couple of them will be with us in the summer, and they will graduate before, and they will be considered graduates of the 2023 cohort. And I know Mr. Shulner is very happy about that.
It's still town.
So so going into next year, this is what we expect. Our 2024 cohort, right now, we have 34 students. One actually is graduating this year. This young lady came to us mid-year. She was expecting, she had her amazing, beautiful baby in March. And she came to us and said, I want to graduate before my baby is born. And she was already kind of ahead in credits. And so sure enough, she'll be walking the stage at Everett, and I'm sure her baby will be there cheering her on. And so she is 2024 cohort, but she's actually graduating a year early. But we expect that through the summer and as we get into the fall, that we're going to have over 50% of our 2024 on track to graduate next year. I will tell you that peer pressure is probably the greatest motivator. So we have some 2024 cohort students that have been kind of coming around. You know, I've been beating them at three-point contest. Right, Zach? Three-point contest? So, and not, really not doing much work outside the hub. Or really, well, now they're seeing their friends gonna walk that stage, or they're seeing their friends, they're caught up in credits. And it's really neat to see some of our students that haven't really shown that fire to get back on track. Well, when your buddy's gonna walk across that stage, that's the greatest motivator. So it's been neat to see that. Total courses completed as of today, 193. Now, yes, that's a please do not take 8, 193 divided by 89. That's not how this number works, okay? But in the showcase, we started to have an all-star, so students' name, courses that they've completed. It's hard to keep up now. And what's cool is that we started that probably, I don't know, Thanksgiving-ish maybe, and there were not a lot of names, and there were not a lot of courses under those names. And now when we get around to putting those names and courses up in the bulletin board or the showcases, we're gonna need multiple. It's, a lot of students have really caught fire, and it's really, has been neat to see. And then student athletes, one. Now, why in the world would I even include that number? Because that is amazing. If you know the story, it's amazing. And I want to say it's amazing that the school district is allowing our students that are eligible to play sports. And Capital Area students can do that as well. Many, many districts, some districts I've worked in, the alternative education school is not a part of athletics. And so for you as a board and superintendent Shulner, that decision is, I think, gonna be a game changer moving forward. Even though that number is one, it's gonna be a game changer. And Marcus couldn't make it here. He had planned on it. He couldn't get a ride. And he's disappointed. He's texting me, right, you know, can you come pick me up? But Marcus is, what, Zach, six foot four? Right? And I know you can beat him, so we won't go there, but but, and he has never stepped foot on a high school basketball court. He was never eligible. Marcus came to us in the fall, and I would say even the first month, there wasn't really any promise of, you know, he just really kind of showed up, started kind of doing some work. And we sat down with him and drew our mountain and showed him where he's at and what his goal was. And, but I'm not gonna take responsibility for that. He went to Everett basketball practice in the fall. And the coach and some mentors over there, and I've been able to meet a couple of them, but but they, they are the reason why he played second semester. They are the reason why he's back on track, because basketball, he did it to play basketball, and that was a motivator. And we're gonna And we're going to have other students in the future that will be a motivator. So thank you for that. Marcus is back on track. And he is one of the students that beats me every time I play him. He lives under the rim. So speaking of students, student voice, and that is a roundtable from Dr. Berry's presentation. To see our students laughing and engage and talking about things that any teenager don't, they don't really want to talk about their feelings, they don't want to, you know, be vulnerable. And it was just an amazing two days, but student voice is key. We invited three students to join us, unfortunately, two just last-minute transportation issues. But I think Zach jumped on a bike. Oh, you drove? Awesome. So, and he has practice. So we're going to bring Zach Wall up here, if you don't mind, Zach. And we asked the students to think of three words to describe the Hub experience. And Zach was introduced to me through Superintendent Shulner. You know of the Ebersol weekends and the credit recovery experience. Zach was out at Ebersol and a conversation struck up between the superintendent and student. And the next week, Zach came, we met, we sat down, got him logged in and ready to rock and roll, and he hasn't looked back. Zach's going to be walking the stage at Everett in June. One of the nicest young men you'll ever meet, and he has to leave to go to practice, so... But if you ever see Zach around, or he just got a job at Taco Bell, if you're ever going through, he told me free bean burritos for life. I'm going to take you up on that. But I'm going to hand this over to Zach. Student voice is key. And you're welcome at the Hub anytime. And I think, you know, as you know, when you visit schools, don't talk to the principal, don't talk to the teacher, pull a kid aside and say, hey, how's it going? And you'll get the real story. So here's that.
Hi, everyone. He said three words, I'm going to say supportive, fun, and safe. Supportive here because everything, all my goals and stuff I say to them, they're very supportive about it. Never felt unsafe here, and it's always fun, I always give Mr. Adams probably a basketball, so I didn't kill him. But I really like it here, though. Great opportunity for me.
So any questions for Zach before he gets out of here? All right, thank you, sir, great job. So with that, again, want to thank the board, thank Superintendent, thank the executive team. You know, my year in Lansing, I was going to say my first year. My year in Lansing has been just absolutely outstanding. And the team that we've assembled, I can't say enough about them and the work that they do. Mr. Gatlin's been outstanding. And we really, it's a true team because, you know, there's 89 students. And again, about 60, 65 engaged that we'll see, that will engage with us and text as of now, that will go up and so on. And we all kind of have our cohort. So I have students that will text me at 10 o'clock on Saturday night and say, will you unlock this quiz for me? Or, hey, you know, I have to, you know, I can't be there on Monday, can you meet with me on Tuesday? I know Ms. Hsu, Mr. Claiborne, they're getting texts at midnight, I'm sure, beyond. So, and so we all have positive relationships with the students, but it's really neat. You know, of course, I can, you know, play some basketball and play around the world and build some relationships that way. Ms. Hsu, you know, can connect with students in another way, and Mr. Claiborne, and Ms. Johnson, and Mr. Gatlin. So it's really nice that, you know, come count time, for instance. These are virtual students, it's two-way communication. So we get to on count week, blow up their phone at midnight. Or I should say 11:59 and say, you have one minute to log in and get an assignment done so we can count you. And so, but that relationship, it takes time, as you know. So as new students come in, it's kind of like, you know, you have a good family and it's great. And then, oh, there's a new sibling and that kind of, all right, we have to start over. And where does that person kind of fit in? And what's neat is we have a cohort of students, core group that's been with us from the start, that really will take new students under their wings and really are their go-to. So it's been great, we're ready to finish strong. I know our students are ready to finish strong. And with that, we thank you. Any questions for myself or the team?
Sure, I'm going to open it up for questions. I did receive a note from our productions team, I just need to make this announcement really quick. We know that we had some audio issues at the beginning of our programming, so our live YouTube video watchers may have lost some sound. But when the recording goes up, our audio team will fix that part that was missed. So just to put that note on there, make sure I remind my colleagues to turn their mics on so we can capture some. And I'm going to call on Dr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Hi, Dr. Hartley, I have two things. The first is really, really picky. So in the slide where you had the numbers, you were talking about how in the 24 cohort, you had 20 out of 34 on track to graduate. And in the 23 cohort, you had nine on track to graduate. What's the denominator, nine out of how many?
Oh, oh gosh, yeah, I'm sorry, I should have put that on there. 35.
35.
Or 41? Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. So what that tells me is that the proportion of kids in the following cohort in 2024 is higher, the proportion of kids who are now on track than in 2023. So that's great, that's great growth.
Correct.
My second, the second thing I wanted to ask was, I think it's great about the student athlete. Are there any other opportunities for kids to participate in other types of extracurricular activities aside from athletics?
Great question, and thank you for prompting that, absolutely. So our students have access to anything that Capital Area is running. So art club, STEM club, gosh, Amber has stood up here and hasn't said anything, so...
We have a digital art club and a face-to-face STEM club after school. The art club is actually interested in starting some face-to-face gatherings. They are interested in painting canvas work for our walls down in our media center. We also have a new social club that just started. So it just gives the students a chance to get together, hang out, you know, just have that interaction because they don't always get it. Anything that we do at the online school is always available to the Hub students as well, so.
Thank you. And then, as Mr. Claiborne pointed out, we had David here from CTE Programming. So we have a few students that we're going to have already, but we'll sit down and see if that will fit into their schedule. So, yes. And then also, last board meeting, Mr. Horford, the program that he's running, I took a lot of notes because we know we have some student athletes that we want to encourage to go to Johnson Fieldhouse as well. So, yeah. Great questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
I got a heck of a preface coming up. One, we had a live stream, and shout out to McGraw &amp; Company for making that work. I thought no chance that that was going to work. Two, you may all not have noticed this, but superstar extraordinaire Lori Brandon sent us the slides, which we couldn't see. And that was just so high-level, that has to be acknowledged. I have a question, but I have to go through some. I'm scrolling social media the other day, and I see that Dr. Body was invited to speak at Michigan State's commencement. We should clap for that real quick. But a fit of rage washed over me, because I want to do that. So I was reaching out to my people, and I said, hey, I'm a 1.9 graduate from Lansing High School's summer school kid, 1998, and I got 40 straight four-point classes at MSU, how do I do this? And he said, well, if you don't get a doctorate, it's not going to happen. That was the unfortunate part. But in that, we asked him questions. He was like, well, how the hell does that happen for you? And I'm like, well, asynchronous is the way. I was the kid that, I had a rough life, too much stuff busy. Then I had some success in life and too busy to do it again. And so asynchronous is the way. So I love hearing that your students are responding to that. The question is, what's the capacity? Like, it sounds like we shot past the moon, which is fantastic. But what's the vision between you two, or maybe even you, Superintendent, on what could we take this to?
And so I don't have a number, and I don't think necessarily Ben would either. It's not, it's two things. One, we have a lot of space. And we want to make sure that our students feel like they have a lot of space. What's nice about the Hub concept is, let's say, you know, we grow to 120 this fall, we're not going to have 120 students here at the same time. Because what's nice is, we, you know, their own schedule kind of dictates when they can come to the Hub. But also, as we sit down with the families and we go through transcripts and welcome to the Hub, we have room in our afternoon session. We have some students coming in just Mondays, Fridays. So there's not necessarily a magic number. What I will tell you is, adult-to-student ratio is key. So as we grow to 120, 150, we just want to be able to make sure that we're staffing that in a way that we can keep it individualized and personalized, and students feel like they're not getting lost, and that there's at least one adult that really connects with that student. We have the C-Wing that is being utilized for some other things next year, but we've kept open some classrooms. We even talked about, you know, do we look at potentially opening up a classroom for maybe some younger? We have two eighth graders here. We just enrolled a seventh grader just because of discipline issues, and we were kind of thinking of a solution. I said, over at the Hub, then that seventh grader can continue the asynchronous course through summer school before he goes to eighth grade. So, you know, just the, we have the space to grow. And it's just a matter of making sure that the adult-to-student ratio is there to keep that individualized. But what's nice is we can grow bigger than what that traditional five days a week, seven hours a day in classrooms, because they're moving around and we're really tailoring it to come into the Hub for two hours. You know, okay, why don't you come, you're, like Zach started working, he was coming five days a week, now he comes when he's not working at Taco Bell. So it's very fluid with that. Also, we have, like the young mothers, they rarely come into the Hub. Childcare is an issue. So we know we can really grow with the online learners, which is asynchronous, and then have the Zoom check-ins, the text check-ins, the phone check-ins. And, you know, they come once a week to meet with Ms. Johnson. So there's a lot of flexibility with that to grow. So, go ahead.
No, no, yeah, I mean, I think that we have a lot of space to continue and to grow. And I would say there's two really interesting pieces to the question. One is, and I had written a little bit about this weeks ago, is where we can really do something special is take the Hub to another city. Is that we can expand this because the need for this is acute around the country. We have to stay in Michigan, those are the laws. But there's a lot in Michigan where I think we can do it. And I think through the incredible work of the people standing here and a lot of the people that you don't see, they got there. The other thing is, the hope is that we never have to get too big because it means the other part of our district is working well. So I love the question because this is wonderful and incredible. And we'll do everything we can to allow for as many kids who need it to use it. I think, you know, my gut says, you know, you're a district of 10,000, it's really for high school. You're talking hopefully 1,000 a grade at about 4,000. 10%, you know, there's the, basically the response to intervention model where you have about 5% of your kids really need something like that. So, you know, I would hope to see, you know, maybe, maybe a couple of hundred, maybe. But our hope, of course, is that we're also strengthening everything else in our district, that the kids don't have to get here to begin with. And to Dr. Kavanaugh's, you know, really kind of important point about the data is, when we started this, and what's crazy is, it just started this year. And it didn't even start in September, it started like kind of the end of September, is that we had zero kids in the cohort that were on track. Now it's nine, still low, still about 20, 25%. But now you're looking at the next-year kids, you're almost at 50%, if not more, because it's 20, 20, 34, right? So it's, you know, you're talking about some impressive numbers. The hope then is you get closer and closer where all of those kids then do it, and then maybe you can go back to a traditional, if you want. But I'd say we probably have the capacity for about 150, 200. But the hope is that, you know, we might not need all those spaces. Or that some of those will be in another city that we're helping to support.
May I have a follow-up? And so, correct me if I understand this right, specifically to the expecting mothers thing. Because of the Catholic family services, I know a traditional teacher can't go to someone's home, but Abigail can go to their homes, right? The check, I love a text check-in, but that's obviously not enough for people that need more guidance. Are we, am I understanding that correctly, though? That she could go to people's homes?
So with, we have a very variety of community partnerships that have helped our students, including our young mothers. Abigail's a great resource. But we have sent public safety, just like a traditional school setting, we have done home visits if needed. Yeah, absolutely. The, we've gotten public safety involved. We've actually gotten the traditional high schools involved because all, most of our students, we have a couple of school of choice, but most of our students have come from one of the three high schools, where we'll reach out to them, hey, haven't seen so-and-so in a while. And they, we actually have been very successful with them being able to find that student, reach out to that student to reconnect.
Thank you. And then the last thing is so, and I don't want this to be a workaround, but I just, I think Jordan and Jaleel and Jenelle, the coaches, they will know kids better than we could probably know, even with all our relationships, who would benefit from that and be the next Marcus. Dr. Rodriguez saved my life with wrestling, that's one of the reasons I stopped punching people in the face so frequently. So I just understand the benefit of what Marcus is going through. And I'm glad you told his story because I was on the sideline trying to figure a way in. And then once I got in, it was enough to get me that 199, nine reciprocating to stick around.
Well, I think we're going to, our desire is to hold our own graduation next year, so I think we found our speaker.
Exactly. And one thing I want to add to what Kurt said, because it's so powerful, and be it sports, or arts, or music, or whatever it is, when you give something that a kid really wants and lets them come in, the world changes. But one of the things that actually the Hub allowed us to do, and I want to give credit to Jessica Benavides as well, is that we re-looked at what our eligibility rules were. And what we found was that we had really weak rules when it came to things like GPA. For those of you remember, when I got here, the GPA minimum was 166. I mean, that's barely a minimum. We raised it to two. But what we unpacked was that there was stuff about cumulative GPA. So that no matter what a kid did, a kid failed the first year and then got As everywhere else, could never play. So we actually, because of the work at the Hub and because of what Jessica did, we all sat down and said, what's fair? And we were able to change it so that a kid, if they showed growth, if they added to it, they were working really hard, they could actually play. Which was really powerful because then, once they're on the court, they feel supported, they feel loved, they feel success, and then they kept going. So hopefully, this will lead towards even more students joining whatever it is, arts, music, PE, I mean, sports, to do this. So, yeah. And thanks to everybody here, that policy change impacted hundreds of kids. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. And Superintendent might have answered my question already, but remind me, kids that come here to the Hub, if they want to, they can go back to the high school once they're up to par?
Yes.
But that is not the focus, right?
For a small handful of this year's students saying, hey, I want to go back to this, and we're like, awesome. Let's sit down, here's what needs to happen for you to go back. And like, for instance, and Mr. Bogan, he was great. So we had a student that was not attending here. And so that student had a, his PO contacted me, said he wants to go back to Sexton. And I, so Dan, myself, the PO, we all worked together. We brought the young man in, sat down and said, this is how you get back to Sexton. So if that's a goal, and then once they get back on track, they can certainly do that. What I found, starting the program in Flint eight years ago, rarely do students actually go back, even when they get back on track, because they have found success here. because they have found success here. And, and the other, eight years ago, I looked at that social aspect much different than I do now. It's really interesting with social media and the way we, how far we've come. Our students really don't miss out on the social aspect, be, well, I was, my phone's in my pocket, because of this. And it really is interesting because I know if I'm 16, 17 and I have to, I'm not going to a high school with my friends back in the day, I feel like I'm missing out on every, my world's over. And our students get that social experience and that, feel that need in different ways. They are connected with their friends even though they're not attending Sexton ever. So I think even more so, the, hey, I want to go back here. They're still meeting their friends at basketball practice. They're still, because they know what's going on. They don't have to walk the halls on a Friday and say, what are you doing tonight? They know what's going on. And I think, so the answer is yes, that can be a goal. They can meet that goal. Absolutely. And we've had a couple of students that we've set, we've said, here's the plan. Here's how you get back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lilje?
Thank you all so much for your work and for your presentation tonight. It's been interesting to hear about the hub all year and how amazing and wonderful and unique and great and all. But to be able to come here and meet all of you and hear about the mechanics of it and everything is really great because I really, I still feel like I don't understand enough of why it works so well and, and what the magic is. But there are, the three things that stuck out to me were that the hub gives a chance for redemption and that there's no magic secret. We love our students. And when Zach said that his three words were supportive, fun, and safe, like those things just really stood out to me and I'm really grateful to all of you. My question might be, well, I mean, whoever wants to answer, whatever you think. We've talked about all the, the things that are different here at the hub than like a regular high school, but a lot of the stuff you're talking about sounds like it might benefit everybody. And so I, I just wondered if there were things that are happening here that we would like to bring.
I, I mean, I think that's, that's absolutely right. You know, when you create something new, you learn from what works and what doesn't. And so this is almost a pilot for things that we can bring to all of the schools. There's no question that you want to allow for more flexibility. There's no question that you want to create safe spaces. There's no question that you want to think about space in a different way. But I think also what you have is sometimes the traditional model works very well for some, for some folks. But I think there's a lot of things that we've learned this year that we can take to Everett and Eastern and Sexton and everywhere. And so much of it really is about the individualized relationships. It's, you know, and you've heard me talk a lot about, you know, possibly bringing things like advisory and stuff like that to the district. What, I mean, there's no one kind of secret sauce, but I think the secret sauce of the hub as well as any alternative program that works is they build a very specific bond to that individual kid. And the more that we take that and permeate that throughout the district, that's the big learning. We also can articulate the use of asynchronous or online work as a way to add to and maybe not completely supplant others, right? So for instance, we might have a child at a school that doesn't have an advanced placement class. But knowing that when kids are self-directed and they're supported, they could maybe take that online. So I think what this is really is proof of concept that with passionate, wonderful individuals that choose to be at a specific thing for a specific idea with this idea of self-directed, kids can work at different times, kids don't always have to be at certain places, there's ways we can work around it. So, I mean, I'll defer to Adam if you have specific ideas. But what I've seen, and this is really throughout the country, is what you learn from alternative ed is that space matters, safety matters, and that individual relationship matters. And those are things that we can kind of bring to everywhere, even pre-K3s, you know, so.
What he said. Yeah. I, I, truly what he said, but I recall being a principal in a, in a great district, great community years and years ago. And I remember watching, I think it was a third grade class. I'm standing there at the computer lab and they lined up beautifully in the hallway. They walked down the hall, amazing. They went in the computer lab and they took the alcohol swab and cotton ball and they cleaned the headphone, put them on and they logged in. It was beautiful. And then it was like five minutes on the computer, then they stood up and they lined up and they walked back to the classroom. And I just remember this gut feeling of, something's not right. You know, a 45-minute computer lab and 30 minutes of it was just, you know, walk in a straight line, sit in your assigned seat and do the same assignment as all of your 30 other classmates. No creativity, no autonomy, and then line up again and head back. And so, but the flip side is, that's K-12 education. That's a huge system that we have to find ways, it's a sandbox we're not really ever going to get out of. We just have to find ways, how do we build different sandcastles and give students that autonomy within that sandbox? And that's the key. And we've come a long way since that 20 years of me sitting there thinking, this just isn't right with technology. So the asynchronous. You're young enough to have experienced that. I'm not. So, you know, but to be able to do this anytime, anywhere and students that at 8 o'clock AM, they don't, they're not ready to learn math. But guess what? There's a large number of students that are ready and they learn better that way. And they want that teacher in front of them. And so it's really, as Ben said, just finding those, you know, I, when you're tackling a high school of 1,200 students and it's just, you know, how do we make those connections? And there's a lot of research behind it, as all of you know, that the number one success for children and teenagers is that relationship with an adult and, and having people in their life. And we are fortunate to, that's just, that's our number one priority as students come in and we meet with them and their families and we get, and, you know, and, and as, and that's why, you know, the, the question of what's the capacity? We will grow, but we will do that in a very cautious, intentional way because we know that our students weren't successful in that traditional setting. But as you can see, you're going to be at graduation. There, there's going to be an amazing amount of young men and women walking that stage and going to the Michigan States and the LCCs and getting, they are successful in those traditional settings. So it's really kind of tweaking and adjusting where we can within the system.
Thank you. And I really want to thank you all for your presentation and thank you to this entire administration and team under the leadership of our superintendent who are really looking at those alternative opportunities to allow students to be successful. I, I have a question, but I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Lopez.
Yep. No, as you were talking, it reminded me that we have to be careful about this setting because it could become a dumping ground. And that's what we don't want it to happen. So everybody that's involved in this and in, in our local high schools need not to look at this as such. It has to be more definite, more intentional, and keep it that way for success. Because otherwise, you know, we've had experiences. Okay? So that's, that's just my feeling then.
I will speak for all of us. We appreciate that comment. We agree. And I would tell you, Cordelia Black's been amazing. Ben's been awesome. We, there are students that we've had a lot of conversations, is this the right place? The Special Ed Department's been wonderful. There's been a few students that have been referred here. And this just simply isn't the right place due to their needs. So we are cautious and I would agree with you. A lot of unfortunate, you know, throughout the state, country, alternative eds are kind of looked at that dumping ground, so to speak. So we're very intentional about that onboarding process and about any red flags that this, this is not the right placement. Let's look at some other, you know, opportunities for those students. So we appreciate that comment.
So look, you made me think of another question. So is the hub equipped to take students with an IEP?
Oh, for sure. Yes. In fact, we have a posting right now. I don't expect to fill that this spring, but we will have a special, our own Special Ed certified teacher going into the fall. We have enough numbers to justify that. Lisa Ivy, who is Capital Areas teacher, is handling our caseload as well.
Okay.
And I think Lisa will be very happy when we have her own Special Ed teacher.
My original question was, can you remind me, how does the graduation process work here? So a youth who comes to the hub attains the credits that they need to graduate? They graduate from the, they receive their diploma from the school that referred them?
So they will receive, actually this year, they're going to receive a Capital Area. That's what it will say on their diploma. Next year, it will say Lansing Learning Hub.
Okay.
They, the diploma they receive will be from the hub because we're an 18-credit diploma.
We did do it. Okay.
This year, our graduates will be walking with the school that they were referred just because we have a very small cohort. We'll have our own celebration. But that way they get to experience that with their homeschool, so to speak.
Just, just to clarify is the Lansing Learning Hub is its own school. It has an EEM. The state has blessed it as its own school. So a child who gets the 18 credits will get a diploma from the Lansing Learning Hub. Because there's so much partnership with the online school, they're also able to do that. But what I like is not only can they have their party and their support and their love from Lansing Learning Hub, but this year they'll be able to walk with their, their homeschool as well.
And the principals have been outstanding.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we are thankful to have this send off with you, Dr. Hartley, for our, our presentation at the hub. Thank you.
Can I just say something about that?
Absolutely.
So I just want to say thank you to Adam specifically, but also to the team. Guillermo said something that I want to highlight is there is a tendency, not just in Lansing, but across the country, to create alternative ed as those kids, get them away, we don't have to worry about them. We can pretend like they don't exist. And when you look through the annals of Lansing, this building, the Center for Success, I think it was called. Then there was something called the Wood Creek something, something, something. And when you look back at their graduation rates, they basically had a 0% four-year graduation rate over generations. Just this first year alone, the hub's going to beat that, right? And then hopefully next year and next year and next year. But the reason why this works is because we never think of any of our children as those children. They're our children. And the more we do that, the more we'll be able to get everybody in this community the right fit for the right place. And so Adam and the team, you know, certainly Dork is Germic, Amber, you know, the, as, as being part of the Lansing family, as being willing to take a ride on something that didn't even exist when you started, it's really pretty special. And so I want to thank you. And I really also want to thank the board. We get to do really creative and somewhat crazy things because you've been so supportive. People are starting to really look at Lansing now as a place that's doing innovative work. And I repeatedly say it's because the board allows for it. And so I want to thank you for that as well. And I'll turn it over to the president.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I am going to have us revisit our other, other business, even necessary item number six on our agenda and turn it over to Superintendent Shuldiner and Ms. Tokar.
Great. Thank you so much. So, you know, one of the important things that a school board does is kind of think about and have conversation and certainly take the advice of the superintendent when they want to about certain things. As you've probably noticed, in the last two years, we've brought more things to the school board than had been normally brought. And a lot of that has to do with us really trying to do everything by the book, totally above board and really almost overly transparent. And the reason for that, of course, is that we always want to make sure that not just the board understand what's going on, but the, but the community is as well. And so sadly, sometimes, you know, the superintendent asks the board to make difficult decisions. And, you know, I've written about it before, kind of explained it before. But what's happening today is that there are three motions that I will recommend the board take about how to move forward with some HR decisions. Again, as I, as I wrote about, is that these decisions are not made for any reason based on the incredible talents of people. It's not made on any decisions based on people not doing their job, but that sometimes school districts have to make thoughtful decisions that are in the best case for the district in terms of where our students are and also following some of our labor negotiated contracts. So I will turn it over to Christina as the Chief Operating Officer and overseeing HR to go through these. And I'm also certainly always happy to answer any questions. But I think Christina will do a much better job than I, giving the, the, kind of the detail as to this. But again, this is the exact same thing that I wrote about previously.
Can you hear? Okay, great. Adam turned it off on me. Okay, so just kind of piggyback on what Ben already mentioned. As a district, we have to make sure that we're following proper protocols and procedures when it comes to Michigan School Code and honoring collective bargaining agreements. And so whenever changes like these occur, we're, we make sure that we contact our legal counsel in this, in this case, Trum Law Firm, just to make sure that we're making, you know, following all proper procedures and protocols. And so that's why you're seeing these items on the agenda tonight before you because these are things that need to happen in open session. So that's why you're seeing them. For two of the employees, Mr. Warren Watkins and Mr. Lamar Wilson, these gentlemen are current assistant principals that are within both Everett High School and Dwight Wright School of the Arts. In the collective bargaining agreement, we have different limits that we set to how we staff our principal and assistant principal positions. For assistant principals, we have one assistant principal for every 450 students that are at the school. At both of these schools, enrollment has declined and they have fallen below the limits that are bargained inside of the agreement. And so that's why we're reducing an assistant principal at both of these locations. For Ms. Gundrum, that is with our, she is with our REAP grant. So we've talked about our REAP grant before in the past. And there's a restructuring that's happening with the REAP grant to make sure that we're meeting the metrics and outcomes and goals of the REAP grant as we enter our last year with that funding from the federal government. So that is why you're seeing this here because we have to restructure the positions to make sure that we're meeting those goals and objectives.
Ms. Tokar, can I verify a couple of things? These, all three of these positions are last of positions, correct?
Correct. Yes.
And we have a requirement in their contract to do noticeably off by a certain time prior to July 1 because of the way their contracts?
Correct.
Are there any questions from board members? Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President. These three positions will be eliminated. Is that correct? Thank you very much.
Ms. Williams?
I have a couple of questions. My first question is, because they are principals, can they actually, and they, so are they certified to teach as well?
I would have to check on each of these people, but a lot of times they are, sometimes they're not. So there are administrative certifications and there are also teaching certifications and sometimes principals hold both. Yep, go ahead.
So with that, why not look at possibly moving them into the gaps where we need the educators? A, because they're minority men, two of them are off, and also because we know we need the teachers?
Right, absolutely. That is something that we work with them on. Just because this, this is a decision to eliminate the positions, it doesn't mean that they can't remain staff members in the district.
Okay, so with that defined layoff versus just reallocating them to a different position?
Sure. So since these are positions that are currently budgeted and within, for the district in these positions, these exact positions are being eliminated. So as per the collective bargaining agreement, we have to go through the elimination of the position. And then we work with the members on whether or not there are other positions that they're qualified for that they would either like to apply for or be placed in. So that's two separate, like one has to go first and then there's the second step. And this is the first part of that process.
Okay, so could we have done it the other way versus bringing the, this? Okay, so could we have done it the other way versus bringing the, this to the board first, and maybe talking to them and having, because we know the positions are going to be eliminated, preparing them to be in other positions, so when they receive this, they're already, you know, could we have done this the other way?
So there are, we can't do it the other way, but there are conversations that were held with each of these individuals, and as part of their collective bargaining agreement, they are allowed to apply for additional positions, and there's conversations about other positions they may want to be in. So, and depending on what positions they want to be in, we can't violate other collective bargaining agreements or the last of collective bargaining agreements, so we're not allowed to just slide people into positions, if that makes sense. The positions have to be posted, and everybody has to have equal opportunity to apply for positions. And so there's not just a sliding of people into positions. I hope I answered your question.
The one thing I'll add is, you know, for an issue like this, is you got to go step one, which is informing folks that the position won't exist. The moment that happens, then you can start to have conversations about what they might be or might not be eligible. What you can't do is start to have conversations with somebody saying the position might not exist, or, you know, hint, hint, something might be happening going down the line, because then you're in some problems within the, kind of, the collective bargaining, because you can't say to somebody, something might be happening, or it could be happening, you've got to follow the protocols to do this. The hope, of course, is by doing this now, rather than at the end of the month, or behind closed doors, or something like this, you can then have these conversations. Your original question, which is really astute, is if they have, let's say, a teaching license, then they would be able to, depending on the bargaining unit, actually revert back to a position under their, under their teaching license. So that's happened previously before. And so the hope is that we can do this based on the position, not the person, and then say to the person, okay, what license do you have? What can we do? How do we move forward? But, I mean, I know that HR and Trune and everybody under the sun has tried to tell us exactly how to handle this. And, you know, to Christina's credit, and also to our lawyers' credit, which we seem to be paying them quite a lot of money these days, is we're really trying to follow the rules here, because sadly, and not to throw anybody under the bus, there, there seemed to have been a history of wink, wink, nod, nod stuff, and you really can't do that. It gets, it gets everybody in a kind of a sticky wicket, so.
Mr. Shuldiner or Ms. Tokar, it's clear to me the need to eliminate the AP positions because of the enrollment size of the school. I'm, I'm curious if there's, if it's necessary for us in the resolution to say declining student enrollment, or could we specify that it's declining student enrollment in that building?
Yeah, it is in that particular building, which, and it's part of the collective, the CBA. Right, so it is declining enrollment in that particular school.
Yeah, I just, I just don't like the language in the resolution that says it's A declines, but that's, that's neither or there. I do, my question is about the REAP position. That is a position that it was a decision to reimagine or restructure the REAP department. What assurances do we have that the work of the REAP program will still continue, and what is, what is that org chart going to look like now?
Sure, I will do my best to explain that, as I don't oversee that, but, yeah.
Short jokes, the short jokes begin. So a couple of things that you, the board should know is, one of the things is, the REAP grant was established prior to me being part of that system. And so when grants are written, they are looked at, what are the metrics and outcomes that are needed by the district to, what is the need, basically? Because we don't write grants for things that we don't have a need in the district, right? Ben has made it really clear, like, we're not chasing money, we have to chase things that are really beneficial to our school district and to our students. So initially, when the REAP grant was written, there were some needs and things in the district that we really felt were where the needs were. And then after having time, the superintendent and diving into those needs, we've really found that those supports have changed. And so the REAP grant will continue on. It is something that is based on systems and sustainability, and really, the focus of the REAP grant is building systems that are really sustainable, and that will change the district as the REAP grant closes, right? It's like a seed grant, so you want to plant the seeds, so then after the REAP grant closes, then we don't lose the momentum, it's not just a money in and then we're done. And so in the analysis with our REAP director, looking at the outcomes and things, the positions that we had with the, one of the assistant directors, the supports that are needed have changed. And so to fulfill some of the metrics and the outcomes in the grant, we felt it necessary to reorg those responsibilities into something different. What's the expiration of the REAP grant? Next year. Twenty-four. We have one more year. And that's really why this was critical to do, because there's some outcomes and metrics that we wanted to make sure that we met in the last year. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Madam President. For me, obviously, this is, this is the worst part of anybody's job in anything, so I appreciate the thought that goes into it on the front end. The CBA obviously clearly lets us eliminate positions based on enrollment. The person getting picked, is that local admin or central office? Like, how does that person find themselves in this position?
Sure, it's, yep, it's, it's local admin. So in these cases, we worked with the principal about the needs of the schools, and with the REAP grant director about the need of meeting the metrics moving forward for the program.
One thing I just want to add, so very importantly for a school district, is no decision can ever be capricious and arbitrary, no matter what. And so what's been really good about the process is that the local, the principal, had to give not only a rationale, but a rationale based on data. And so what I'm impressed by is, you know, again, I want to be very, very clear, these three people, they're wonderful, they're educators, they're terrific, they've given a lot to this community. What we want to make sure of is just that we have to do certain decisions based on that. But, yeah, the decisions and the rationales are based on data of the school, so not in this case, I don't want to go necessarily in specifics, but for instance, let's say you had two assistant principals, one was a math expert, one was an English expert, and in that school, the math scores were really not doing very well, you might want to keep that math AP, because you got to move it forward, right? So those are the kinds of decisions that are made on this, and happy to furnish the board with, with specifics.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members? With that, I will receive a motion. We are also able to take this motion all in one vote, as long as the recommended motions are read separately. Dr. Rodriguez?
I move that the Board of Education adopt a resolution to lay off Warren Watkins, as submitted.
It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez? It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez and supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. Ms. Moore?
No, I didn't have a question.
Okay. Oh, okay, thank you. All right, so this motion on the table is to adopt the resolution for layoff for Warren Watkins. Any additional questions or comments?
This is just for the first one.
Any additional questions, comments? I'm going to ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Yes.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Ms. Liljic?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes. That motion passes nine-zero. May I have another recommended motion, please?
Madam President?
Ms. Moore?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution for the layoff of Jamie Gundrum. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Gundrum. Please.
Madam President? Madam President, I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution for the layoff of Lamar Wilson, as submitted.
Thank you, it's been moved by Ms. Moore, supported by?
Second.
Dr. Kavanaugh. Are there any questions or comments regarding the resolution for layoff for Jamie Gundrum and Lamar Wilson, as presented? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Ms. Liljic?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes nine-zero, echoing Mr. Richardson's sentiments about this being tough decisions to make, but an understandable one when we have opportunities within the district, and hope that there will be opportunities for our administrators that have teaching certs to continue to work with us.
Can I make a?
Absolutely.
So, first of all, I want to thank the board. These are the most difficult pieces of this job, and I know how much you care deeply about this district. And I want to say very clearly to not just these three terrific educators, but anybody in the district, when we make these decisions, we never do them lightly, they're always incredibly difficult. But the most important thing is that if you want to be part of the district, you know, there's always going to be multiple opportunities. We always have jobs, we have opportunities, and so sometimes, you know, kids are at one school, but not the other, and that the more that we can work collaboratively, so that everybody has an opportunity. And to echo, you know, Roslin's ideas, is absolutely, we would want all of them to find the right place within the district. And I know that the HR department is always going to try to be working with this, so certainly rest assured that we, we look forward to applications for other positions.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you very much, and that question is for the superintendent. I hope this is a miracle, and we have improved in the number of students in Dwight Rich. If we improve the number of the students in Dwight Rich?
Yeah.
Then this person can apply, or will be restated, or how we do. I hope that we have the right number, that is all I think.
Sure, so, you know, the numbers for Dwight Rich next year would not allocate a second assistant principal. The way that the union contract is, it's 450 persons per student-ish, so you would need about 900 students. Dwight Rich has about 500 and change, certainly to the point that you make, and one of our big goals in this district, is we'd like to get to 11,500 kids. We'd love to grow these schools. There's nothing I would like more than to hire more administrators. Having been a high school principal for 10 years, I can tell you, APs saved my life. So that is huge, but we have to, of course, just follow the numbers and follow the kids.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is public comment on non-agenda items, for which we have none, which brings us to board member comments this evening. Ms. Williams?
Yesterday was a reflection day for me. We know that it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so celebrating all of you, but two of my favorite teachers passed away this week, my ninth grade science teacher and my vocal music coach. And as I begin to think about teaching, teaching is a job where they are certified and trained, but I want us to start thinking about teachers as being our peers. I can learn from Dr. Body, and vice versa, your coaches, the librarians, just the people, because for me, my village was great. I mean, you couldn't go anywhere where there was not someone teaching us, and I think we need to look at what Zack said, we need to start making teaching more fun, more supportive, and just safe. And I think sometimes we forget that, the teachers are trying to do that, but they don't feel safe in their current jobs and their current positions. We need to help them feel that, because while the students are getting it, they may not be getting it. So to all of you, I appreciate all of you, learning is continually ongoing, so I celebrate all of you. Let's try to help continue to bring the things that Zack said, for him as a student, to the teachers as well.
President?
Thank you. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you very much. During the last few days, maybe because we are in the beginning of the spring, I have been attending different celebrations, in which the students from Lansing School District were participating and doing performance. And I told you, the quality of this performance of these students is second to none. Then I think we have a lot of jewelries here in the Lansing School District. The people had to not ignore it, but recognize that our district is providing the best education for the students. Yesterday, thanks to Mrs. Moore and her work, and the work of many others, the celebration of the 3.5. Fantastic. A lot of people there, the principal, the assistant principal, the parents, great celebration. The day before, the recognition of the Latino students, and having a student singing the national anthem, the way he did. And yesterday, the performers and other students, and today, the performance of the cheerleaders. That is Lansing School District, my friends, and we should be very proud. The thank you, and nothing is more painful, painful to me today, the after I talked 24 hours or 40 hours ago, Dr. Carnegie and have him, knowing him for 50 years, suddenly, he's watching us, and then, and giving us everything that he always gave us, love. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez.
Oh, I'm the chair.
Mr. Lopez?
President, sorry. Yes, just going to piggyback on Dr. Rodriguez here, in terms of Dr. Carnegie. I hope that this board does something to honor him and acknowledge him via a resolution, via something that we can publicly state in terms of the many, many contributions he made to this district. So, I'm not prepared to say what, but I think that I would want something that is viable, that it's, that the community understands that, that we recognize Dr. Carnegie's many contributions to this district, and the community, not just the district, but the community. But again, you know, I'm focusing more on, on his tenure in this Lansing School District, and all that he did, so. I guess I could ask the officers to come up with a, with a proper way to honor this man, and, and or the board can, you know, I guess, we're going to have a retreat pretty soon, I don't know if that's too late, but in any way, I think we need to be present as we learn more of the, you know, scheduled funeral arrangements for Dr. Carnegie. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And I can certainly say that that's something we will commit to, to doing as a board, absolutely. Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Dr. Body? Supported by?
Sir.
I would give this to you, Mr. Lopez. All those in favor of adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. At 7:50, we are adjourned.